The Mount Clemens Board of Education Order. Call the roll.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Here.
Ms. Hammond.
Here.
Dr. McFadden. Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Mr. Rickman.
Here. Quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens comments. This is a portion of the meeting where the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District can address the board with your questions, comments, concerns. We ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. You may not receive a particular response to your inquiry this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you request that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. If you would like a written response to any question you may have, we have paper out there or Ms. L has a paper that you can write out the question and you'll receive a written response to any questions you have. The agenda is now open for citizens comments. Second call, citizens comments. Last call, citizens comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, Agenda Item Five. Action item under the consent agenda tonight, Agenda Item Five A, Five A One. Approval of the minutes from the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five public hearing on the final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five and fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. Five A Two. Approval of the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Five A Three. Approval of the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five special meeting. Five B. Approval of bills for payment. Five B One. June's bills for payments. Five B Two. June's financial statement report. Five B Three. Contract listings. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the consent agenda? Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by member Dee Walker to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Support.
Second member Jay Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing seeing none, call the roll please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, Item Six. Business Committee. Item Six A. Annual Resolution for School Bond Qualifying Loan Program. Mr. Superintendent.
Good evening.
Board and audience. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Dawes.
This is an annual resolution that goes to the state we do every year. That just reflects that the board do the resolution to show an estimate of the payment being made on the loan.
And the recommendation is to approve the resolution?
Yes. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution of the annual state bond qualification in the loan program as presented.
You've heard the recommendation, the chair would entertain a motion relative to the Agenda Item Six A, Annual Resolution for School Bond Qualifying Loan Program. Moved by member Cahoon.
Support.
Second member Hammond. Any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Now, this is not for the bond debt, is it?
No, this is for the school bond loan that was taken out.
Annually, every year we take it out. I thought last, we don't take it out every year, but it was.
We're, we just are taking it back from when you guys did take it out.
Because I thought we had enough in reserves that we just moving, moving funds from one pot to another for we didn't have to take that loan out.
We're not taking the loan out, we're just repaying the loan that was taken out years ago.
Okay. We didn't pay that one off and that's, that's what this.
Um, it's scheduled to be paid off, I believe in. It has to be paid off in twenty thirty-one, but we're ahead of schedule and it should be paid off, I believe in twenty-eight.
If you can help me refresh my memory. In past years, hasn't there been a thing where it's like we would borrow money to cover expenses until the state funding came in for like a couple of months?
Some schools do that and I've been part of that in the past, but we don't need to do that.
So we don't do that anymore?
No.
At least it's your good.
Yeah, we did that in the past for the cash flow because from July.
Got it.
And we didn't get the first payment from the state generally till October.
Okay.
And we still had business and bills to pay.
So we don't have to do that.
Right now, we're in a financial position where we don't have to do that for cash flow issues.
Oh, great.
Any additional questions? Call the roll please.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Agenda Item Six B. Bass Controls for P U P Controllers at Seminole. Mr. Superintendent.
Mrs. Dawes.
This came into recommendation from Alicia Forbes and Larry Ireland from the Forefront Maintenance Team. We currently don't have access to climate control systems at Seminole. And with this purchase, we stay with Bass Control who we're with and the proposal amount is twenty thousand four fifty-eight. And if we go to a different person because they would got a quote, we would have to change everything and it would be two hundred thousand or more. So our recommendation is to approve going with Bass Controls for the proposal. So we can have control over the heating and cooling in that building.
The recommendation is to approve the proposal from Bass Controls for P U P Controllers at Seminole. Chair would entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved by member McFadden.
Second.
Second member Cahoon. All right, questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
So this agreement that we come, it's like a service agreement?
It's not a service agreement, it's for the actual.
Divized controller.
Uh, program.
So they're replacing what we have now with something different before we have access and control to it?
It's not replacing it, it just quit working. So we have to get a new program to get it up and working again. So he has, so Mr. Ireland, Ireland has access to control the temperature.
So this is like a one-time?
Yeah.
And then we have access on our, our end until whatever, right? And this comes out pretty sure with like a software or a program warranty, guarantee, something like that?
So he didn't have the ability to control the temperature in Seminole before or?
It broke.
Oh, okay.
You can see though, if you look over to our right or your left, the people, there's people from Seminole, they know all about it. They're excited, they're smiling right now.
I, um, our question is, um, does that, with that new system, if it's up and running and doing what it's supposed to do, is that accessible remotely?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it the same system they currently have?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and they're, they're, in the line of their recommendation, there should be a change. It says Demino instead of Seminole.
Yeah.
So we just want to make sure that you're working at the right place.
It was just a spelling correction.
That's in the back of Seminole.
Yeah, we don't want to think that we demo, we demo in Seminole now, we don't need that out in the universe. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing seeing none, call the roll please.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Item Six C. Varsity Flooring for Refinishing. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, that is kind of self-explanatory as far as gymnasium floor. We, I don't know when the last time it has been refinished.
I'm trying to look in that up with Kelly and it seems like, um, who was A B M? Had, um, we paid them extra when they were on.
To do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, we couldn't find where that was, but it's been quite a while.
Yes, our gym floor is, at this point, pretty much, I would say even a safety hazard because there, it hasn't been refinishing so long, so kids are just sliding around. Um, and typically, what we'll, what we'll do from a facilities perspective is after this, we'll go on a, a schedule, right? Typically, every couple of years, you get that done and so we'll establish our schedule for keeping that up to date and fresh and keeping everybody safe.
The recommendation is to approve, uh, award to contract the varsity flooring for refer, refinishing of the gymnasium. Chair would entertain a motion relative to consent agenda item Six C.
So moved.
I heard Ms. Walker.
Second.
First and Lil' Gil the second, thank you. Ms. Cahoon. Are any questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor?
Do you have a plan of when the work will be completed?
This is gonna, it'll be this, it'll be before school starts, but yeah, this summer.
Mr. Pittman.
Yesterday.
Yeah. A month ago, but yeah.
And it's just to do this year? Is it just to do this year, right? So it's, so the next time it needs to be done, like you said, if it's on a cycle? Okay.
And this is varsity flooring is doing the work, so are we doing both gyms or just the one, the main gym? The high school upstairs gym, so the upstairs gym don't count? Or the main gym?
Now, they're going to be stripping, you know, stripping the whole floor. They got a grid type pad, they pull all that wax and other stuff off and it goes down to the wood and then they re, they seal it and re-barnish it and stuff like. Is there any, anything in that proposal if they find any divots or any weak wood in, in the flooring?
No, per our conversation, what I recall from that, that's, that's not the, the purpose for them. To fix any wood damage or floor, if that's there. If, if they lift that for us, then we'll have to adjust that overcome. They're just, the goal was for them to finish the floor.
Yeah, gotcha.
Yeah.
In the process of finishing the floor, I know it's going to be stripping, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming, I don't know, but going to be stripping, taking paint up and stuff like that. So is it going to be a new emblem or the emblem is going to be re, redone as is?
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing seeing none, call the roll please.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, Seven. Item Seven, Human Resources, Seven A. New Hire, Seven A One. Thea Lavender, Art Teacher, Seven A Two. Victoria Lucas Taylor, First Grade Teacher. Mr. Superintendent.
As it is stated there, we have, we have offered those two teachers that have accepted positions. Uh, Ms. Lavender for Art Teacher and Ms. Taylor, First Grade. Any other information pertinent?
Ms. Lavender will be a V A, was offered V A One. She's coming in from, uh, with an interim certification through Teachers of Tomorrow. And, um, Ms. Taylor is coming in at A, in the A Step Ten with years of experience, um, brings efficiency and independent problem solving, reduced training. And we felt like she would be a great, both of them would be a great addition to our team.
The art teacher, is that a secondary or elementary?
Secondary.
Do we have an art teacher now?
We have a sub.
Oh, she was a sub, that was Ms. Dorsey.
We will have one if we're promised.
Uh, Ms. Dorsey, she wasn't too bad, but okay. All right.
The recommendation is to approve the hires of Thea Lavender, Art Teacher and Victoria Lucas Taylor, First Grade Teacher. Chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Items Seven, Eight, One and Two.
So moved.
Mr. Walker and second by Ms. Cahoon.
So we have these two instructors being hired, so what did that put us on our list now as in targets to go? I mean, more empty spots we got to fill.
Still a long way to go, we have those two confirmed, we have one, two, three, four, five, six offered. We're still kind of negotiating. Um, and then more interviews on Monday and Tuesday, so we still have quite a few positions to, to lock in. But we, you know, feeling good, feeling, feeling good where we are right now.
Were there assurances of the, um, last year's teachers coming back this year? Was there like a feeling out, like a survey or something like that given out that people will be coming back in August?
Who's returning? You, you like a?
Like just in general, like you?
Yeah.
Like, you know, you give them like a letter of assurance or something that they'd be coming back or maybe say, hey, are you coming back next year or?
On their payroll stuff, there's a, something that payroll puts on there for assurance.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think it gets put on their check stubs for the summer months.
Has there been anyone saying that they're not returning since school let out or? Just a number, it's fine.
Someone from the elementary, no, secondary? You can say it, oh, we got one from secondary.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry.
Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing seeing none, call the roll please.
Mr. Walker.
Yes.
Mrs. Cahoon.
Yes.
Ms. Hammond.
Yes.
Dr. McFadden.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Rickman.
Yes, motion carries. Item Eight, informational items out of the Business Committee. Eight A, Financial Reports. Are there any questions regarding the July, well, actually June financial reports? Item Eight B, Contract Listings. Are there any questions, comments, concerns regarding Item Eight B, the Contract Listings? Hearing seeing none, moving the agenda forward takes us to Agenda Item Nine. Superintendent's Comments. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, good evening, everyone, again, just a few, uh, informational pieces, updates and uh, and we'll, that'll be it for me, I think. I had the, a great opportunity recently, I just got back from New Orleans. Attended the Urban Superintendents of Americas, of America Conference. That was a organization that I'm a part of and had over maybe a hundred and thirty superintendents from across the United States. I had the unique opportunity to be scholarship to attend that, it all paid for. Um, and it was a, it was a great experience just networking and getting with other superintendents. I was, I was sharing with actually Mr. Fringer earlier in the conversation that, um, I wish I could have recorded and videotaped some of the, the conversation and dialogue. Because the things that we're, we're challenged with are the same challenges. I mean, it was like sitting in here, the same things across teacher hiring, teacher retention, hiring teachers and special education. The numbers are through the roof everywhere. And it, I, I can't, I don't want to say it felt good, but it was, okay, it's not just us, you know? It, this is, this is going on everywhere from California to the East Coast and, um, but it was a great opportunity to, uh, put your head, put my head together with other superintendents, ideals. And just, we're all in the same fight, right? We're all in the same war for our kids and a lot, a lot of, a lot of insight gained, a lot of ideals gained, um, and a lot of connections made for us and, uh, it was a great opportunity. So I'm appreciative, uh, to that organization for, um, sending me or bringing me there. Uh, I want to acknowledge, um, New Way Works right here out of Mount Clemens. You, you all know Shane, if you don't, he, he comes around, um, he's, he's around, around the district a little bit, but he's, uh, over the program, uh, organization New Way Works. And, uh, his, along, his organization, along with the People Driven Credit Union, gave out scholarships to three of our students, totaling ninety-one hundred dollars, nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to be exact. Uh, so just want to acknowledge Shane and New Way Works and, uh, the People Driven Credit Union and thank them for, um, giving back and supporting our students as they go on into their future endeavors. Just to update it with Neola, after our last meeting, there was some conversation I had with Mr. Shepherd, actually. And we had been in contact prior to that with, with Wayne from Neola and he finally came down. So we, uh, Mrs. L and I had a, a sit-down, a meeting with Wayne just on updating, learning more. For me, it was learning about how to act, the physical a, um, aspect of updating policies, administrative guidelines. And so, um, I sent you all an email, if, the, um, MSBO has pulled away from Neola. But we, I'm sorry, M A S B has pulled away from Ne, uh, Neola. They were in partnership together, I guess, for a number of years and they pulled away, but we're going to continue to work with Neola, um, at, for, with our policies and guidelines. And so, uh, we will, we have some dates scheduled, Wayne will be coming down, spending an hour with Ms. L and I to, so just so you know, some of our policies, more policies and administrative guidelines have not been updated for over twenty years. Like these things, I mean, whatever, right? Just like a lot of things that we have found. Um, and so he, the plan that they've given us, we're going to work to make sure we update the most current things that are, that are, uh, hot topics right now and, and current, um, issues or, or current policies and current updates. And then Ms. L and I are going to, throughout the year crunch and try to go back and update what needs to be updated. It'll take some time, but we have a, a game plan, so feel good about that. Just want to congratulate Nikoleisha Holiday in our business office. She received her recertification from MSBO, she has to get a, a certification every five years. And this is her second, uh, term of receiving that certification, so shout out to her and congratulations on her to continue to grow and, um, develop in her area and skillset. Informational, you're going to get information coming out about, about our board retreat next month, August eighth. We're going to just stay locally at this point. Um, so we will commute, August eighth, we'll do a, a working dinner, same timeframes, but we'll, you, we'll be able to go home and come back. The I S D has offered to provide breakfast and dinner for us, so we appreciate them. We'll be at one of their I S, their, their offices, Ms. L is working with, uh, Mike DeVos' office to confirm which location, but we'll be local. Uh, then August ninth, at nine AM, we'll start breakfast and then get into our work at about nine thirty. Different topics will be discussed. One of the things that Mr. Rickman and I have been talking about as far as trying to develop an agenda, the discussion, is, um, Mrs. Dawes and I, along, along with Mrs. Forbes, Alicia, our facilities are going to sit down and we really need to talk about, um, capital building improvements now that the bond, you know, didn't happen. So what do we, what do we need to prioritize with our facilities, right? We got twenty thousand dollar parts going out, that's just the beginning of what could potentially be. And so, uh, that'll be some discussion, a topic at our retreat too, to, to kind of put our heads together and with the, with the experts insight on what we need to prioritize to, to keep our facilities up and running. Um, and as well as a number of other things. So Ms. L will be reaching out to you with more information on that. Again, we are, it's been non-stop with the hiring process and, and interviews and trying to get people, have some good conversations with our union about, um, you know, it's, it's really tough to, it's, it's, it's like people are chasing the bag, teach, it's a teacher's market, teachers can go anywhere. And it's, it's, we have to be really unique in how we try to, um, attract, retain, recruit against some of these other districts and that, that are in, you know, maybe bigger districts or in situations where they can offer bonuses and more money and better steps. So, um, we are really going to, once we know what we have, you know, uh, as far as after we address, uh, addressing our facilities and making sure we can be here, we got to really have some conversation and dialogue about trying to be more, um, competitive to, the data's not going to move without highly qualified people in those classrooms. And in order to get those people in the classrooms and keep those people, we got to figure out, uh, some type of way to, to compete and, and offer a respectable, um, salary that we can maintain, right? So it's about sustainability. Conversation I was having earlier today, like, I want to give the teachers the world, but I still want to be here next year too. So it's a, it's a balancing act that we are working on and we'll have to figure out. But nevertheless, we have still locked in a few people as you have just approved and we have a lot of people on the, on the table right now. And in addition to that special ed, uh, uh, special populations, uh, position, we have interviews coming up for that next week, so we're excited about some, we have some strong candidates in that pool as well. So, uh, those interviews will happen next week. And last but not least, really excited, we're up, up to about thirty, um, applica, uh, new student applications right now. Uh, Mr. Pittman is, our, is our, we're doing centralized enrollment, so now enrollment all goes through Mr. Pittman. It doesn't go to the buildings and, and then, then, and then to Mr. Pittman, just too many steps and we're small enough, so we have centralized it, they all come through Mr. Pittman and gives us an opportunity to have a better handle on those things and, uh, and, and a little be, a little more effective or efficient and accurate with, with that process. That's all I have right now. That's my comment.
Sure.
Maybe. Dante has something that I forgot, he just wanted to tell me until after he said it, I was like, oh, always happen, but I think that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Agenda Item Ten, Board Comments. Ms. Hammond.
Thank you. Thank you to Shane and he works for, um, supporting the students and also to, is it Alicia?
Yep, Ms. Ford.
For her certification.
Oh, Nikoleisha.
Nikoleisha. For her certification.
Yep, yep.
It's a great accomplishment. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Shepherd.
I'll echo that, uh, Nikoleisha is, um, great to work with, uh, so, uh, I think you got a real gem there and I'm glad, uh, that, uh, she's taking steps to, to remain. Looks like we got a very qualified, uh, first grade teacher especially, uh, but I'm glad we're making steps to, uh, bring in new hires. The art teacher, uh, was definitely needed, uh, for the secondary complex. And, uh, that's about my comments too, thank you.
Right, Mr. Shepherd. Ms. Cahoon.
Thank you. I'm glad to see that we're, our board retreat's going to be local, um, that saves us money and, um, I'm all for that. I echo the congratulations for the recertification, um, and for the scholarships. I'm also happy to see that you guys are going to be working on those guidelines through Neola. Um, so important, so important and thank you to Mr. Shepherd for really kind of spearheading that. I think, um, he, his knowledge that he's, has from previously working here, I think, is really a benefit to this board and to the school. Um, he, his knowledge that he's, has from previously working here, I think, is really a benefit to this board and to the school, so, um, um, yeah, I think that's it. Um, I'm glad to see that there's some sort of streamlined process to that enrollment as well, that's gonna make things so much easier for you guys, more work for Mr. Pittman, but I think it'll be easier and more efficient in the end, so, um, and, um, I know I say it every month, but it's, goes, it, it, I just need to say it every month, that the fact that everybody comes here every day, um, and puts in a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent, um, I applaud that, um, because you could easily walk away and you don't. And I think that you should be acknowledged each and every time, um, everyone, you know? I know you're doing it out of, out of your heart and, uh, I see it, so thank you so much for that, so, those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Thank you, um, welcome again to Thea Lavender and Victoria Lucas Taylor. Welcome to Mount Clemens and the Badling Bathers, we're happy to have you here and I echo my other, uh, board members' comments, that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
You already talked.
You already did.
Um, excuse me, Mr. Walker, I'm sorry.
Thank you, um.
I thought he was gonna do a Dave, you know?
We, we get confused all the time.
Yeah, you guys look alike, you know?
I would say, uh, w- welcome to Ms. Lavender and Ms. Lucas Taylor, um, and I was, you guys probably could go anywhere and you guys chose Mount Clemens for a great reason. And, um, I echo the rest of my board members' comments, and thank you to Shane for his work with our students, um, it, it doesn't go, go unnoticed. And congrats to Ni- Nicola Lisa on her recertification as well, I know she puts in a lot of work, um, I definitely couldn't do her job in accounting or a lot of different way of doing numbers and things like that. Um, she does a great job, um, as we see over time and just looking forward to the board retreat and this is my board comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Dr. McFadden?
Next time, Paul, he give you a second go around, you take it. All right, so, um, Shane, thanks a lot to Shane.
You didn't cut off your second. Since you dibbed him out.
Um, new way it works, uh, thanks, thank you to them and also to the credit union that, that partnered with them, I'm gonna thank both of those guys. Um, Nicola Lisa, amazing, uh, we are about edu- education. Uh, with that note, uh, it may as be some institutes coming up, August sixteenth and seventeenth, you know? We might want to take some training in that and find out what's going on with legislation and all that good stuff. Uh, board retreat, looking forward to it. I'm gonna put a statement here about the policies related to administrative guidelines, 'cause you said twenty years haven't been updated. And I don't want to make people think that our policies wasn't updated, because our, our policy's been updated. But the ones related to administrative guidelines need to be tied in together, so I don't want people to get the wrong impression that we ain't been doing our policies.
Yes, Mr. Monk put in a lot of work to that.
Yeah, yeah, our policy's been updated.
Dante was a witness, they started with zero, 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 one, and went all the way, brought it up.
New hires, amazingly, we need more, so that's a great opportunity. And, um, enrollment packets, I, I love to hear those numbers, um, and it's always great to hear something new happening. Those are my comments, I will not come back to this, this podium, this mic.
Thank you, you heard him, he won't be recognized. I would like to say, um, it was less than a, about a month ago, we were there just having graduation and, uh, here we are in, in July and little, little over a month from now, we'll be gearing up to start it up again. So, um, to, uh, to our staff, en- enjoy, uh, the, enjoy your break, if you're taking a break. Um, 'cause the weather has been okay this year so far, even though we had a lot of rain, it's been, uh, sunny and warm. Um, I'd say kudos to alumnus Shane Giannino, um, and it, and his, uh, efforts, uh, in support of our, our students, um, through the scholarship efforts along with the credit union. As, um, part of our retreat, since we're doing it in August, um, we will use, uh, part of Saturday uh, to serve as a goal-setting session, uh, for the board superintendent, uh, for the, uh, components of the goals that we established, uh, mutually for the evaluate, for the superintendent's evaluation. So instead of doing that in October, since we didn't do this work, this retreat in June or July, in Au- instead, in, in August, we thought, I thought, felt it was close enough that we could, um, work on establishing the goals, uh, for the F, F year, F Y twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, and we'll be working on that. Um, I'd like to welcome our new hires, um, welcome to the family, we're glad you're here. Superintendent mentioned during, um, his, um, experience at, at the conference that sitting around with superintendents from across the country, um, that everybody's talking about the same thing mainly. And that, that's been my experience and exposure with my, uh, dealings at the national school boards level. It doesn't matter, uh, what state you would, I would travel, or you can be in a major urban district or a small rural district. Uh, when you boil it all back, everybody's having the same type of challenges and issues, just at a different level. When you got a bigger school district, you got, you got bigger challenges and bigger issues, but they're the same challenges and issues that you have in small, in smaller school districts. That's why everybody is, is hunting for, um, psychologists and, and, um, um, especially, speech, speech pathologist, uh, social workers, um, you know, everybody from large districts to small districts, everybody, uh, you know, ha- have the same needs, just at, at a different level, so, um, we're, yeah, we are not alone. Never have been and never will be. Uh, enjoy the rest of your break, uh, 'cause it always goes by so quick. Uh, those are my comments.
Mr.?
Yes.
Um, I did have a question, oh, the back to school bash, do you have that date? I reminded you, Dante.
Twelfth, August twentieth, thank you, she got you this time.
She did, she did.
August twentieth.
August, August twentieth?
August twentieth, yep, I'm sorry, yep, Ms. Hines is, uh, working on that.
It's about a month, like I said, about a month, we're gearing up to start it up again. Thank you. As they move by, member Kahoon to adjourn.
Support.
Second, member Walker, call the roll please.
Mrs. Kahoon?
Good job.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at seven oh seven in the PM, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.